Mr. President, today is Tuesday and it's time for the flag salute.
Very good. Councilmember Yaroslavsky, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Sure. Please stand if you're able.
There will be no disruptions of this meeting by anyone, particularly right now during the flag salute. Please be silent or you'll be removed without further warning from this meeting.
Should I hand over the heart? Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Clerk, let's run through the agenda, please. Herman, are you ready to speak?
One love, master.
What items would you like to speak on?
All items on non-agenda.
What name did you sign up under?
All items and non-agenda public comment.
What item did you...
How much is my time?
What name did you sign up under?
Please, four minutes.
What name did you sign up under?
All names, yes. I signed a name. Uh-huh. Brown Act, only name, I signed a name. All names.
Okay, well then you didn't sign up for any agenda items.
Yeah, I signed up for all items and non-agenda public comment. See? Okay? Now, what of my time, Mr. Attorney?
Speaker, which name did you sign up under?
All items and non-agenda public comment, please.
Which agenda item would you like to speak on?
Multiple items I signed up on, Madam Attorney.
Start speaking and tell me which agenda item you're speaking on.
Okay, I try. Yeah, 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 yeah. You know, one thing wrong with doctored records, doctored records, public convenience for Measure 64 is a necessity. People of America, especially us Chinese, like dope on records, like your former councilman, Mark Ridley Thomas, dope.
I don't...
Seeing item five and six regarding police department finding public commercial drugs in America, very good for all you. One love, one drug, I need cannabis in my hometown, Ali. That was five and six, right? On topic. Now, you want to be racist, let's go to the street lighting. Let's go to street lighting. Not lightning, lighting, I-N-G. And what did they say on lighting? Well, doctored records, item 19, CD1, cunt says, oh, relative establishing hearing, date for maintenance off of Alvarado. Am I on topic? See or no? I don't know, but I read it from your bullshit agenda. So now I'm on topic? Fuck you. So, street lighting in 21. Let's go to Allah and pray for lightning. Street lighting for Allah, no more bucket head to have racist meeting privately. Yeah, that was last week. Thank you, Mr. Timothy. Then we go to 20 more street lighting districts approved from CD7, cunt seven. Oh, CD7, lightning. We need lightning to light up all the criminals in America doctored by the federal courts against its allegations of criminal enterprise.
Okay, this has nothing to do with street lighting. Get on topic or go to general public comment.
No, there's more items on here. Look at item number 23. 23 for the record reads... Oh, no, that's more lightning. You don't want no more lightning? Okay, let's go to, um, um, let's see. Um, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Item 26, fuck item 26 for the record. And regarding, again, the criminal federal judge found the city of Los Angeles versus Crescent Apartments, you racist motherfuckers, stealing public money, not doing shit on a budget to house homelessness. Fuck you. Now my non-agenda public comment?
You have one minute.
All right. All right, all right, all right. So we heard, no love, no love, because apartheid here wants to separate the rich from the poor. As you heard the city address, what the fuck did your mayor say? She said, "You white cunts, rich white motherfuckers are gonna pay for billions of dollars stolen by the racist city of Los Angeles Council and their former and past stupid ass mayor who continue to steal public money at the cost accosted by that pink-faced dictator who should get the fuck out of California." Thank God for the Chinese people. I'm looking forward for the day to come when China attacks fucking America 'cause you are racist against Hamas. Fuck you asshole.
Next speaker.
Speaker, which name did you sign up under and which items would you like to speak on?
You know who I am. I signed up for a bunch of agenda items as indicated on your computer screen, Paul. What does it say on there?
You'll have three minutes for the items.
All right, and general comment.
General public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting.
You already took general comment from some people. So, let's see. So we have, um, let's see, on the agenda today, we have got, here we got a lighting districts. Here we have item 28 from Hernandez and Soto Martinez, lighting up City Hall for Autism Awareness Month. Um, so, kinda like that how... Bye, Paul! Why don't you wanna listen to my public comment? You're like Nury now. Um, so we have, um, item 28, that's, um, lighting up City Hall for Autism Awareness Month again. Um, I wonder if it'll be mentioned how, um, people with autism are at heightened risk of LAPD violence. Um, yeah, and other people with mental health. Is that... Let's see, we have item 29, lighting up City Hall for Karen Bass's State of the City Address. Um, you know, I think the state of this city is pretty shitty. Um, at least the city government. Um, and, um, I don't know why we're celebrating the state of the city. It's terrible. The city is in a terrible state right now with the city government. You're all corrupt, you're racist, you're just doing all kinds of stuff. So, um, so let's not light up City Hall for the State of the City Address. We have item 30 from Harris Dawson and Soto Martinez, reward money for snitches. Um, why don't we ever get reward money if we have any information on when the cops go and shoot people? They've shot, what, like nine people this year already, something like that? And it's, um, it's April. Um, but we never get reward money if you have any information on when the cops shoot people. But you'll give all the reward money in the world if you... If people wanna snitch out their neighbors to the police. We have item 32, a holding a public hearing on the mayor's proposed 2024-25 budget. Um, so we shouldn't have any more money going to the cops. You needed to fund and abolish the police. Um, let's, let's fund the city services that are losing all their funding because you... Because of your self-created city budget deficit. Um, that, um, so let's, let's take all that money away from the LAPD and give it towards the city departments. It'll help. That's what you should do for the budget. Uh, we have security cameras at the Granada Hills Recreation Center, CD12, staffer B. You've got, um, more surveillance there. All right, general comment. Um, so, yeah, and then it's just, now there's all this report back that, this, um, news article that it looks like you're, um, you're now, um, you're now lying in court about inside starving. Um, so, you know, that program's been a disaster and, um, you know, it's just, you know, you're not... No one's getting housed, no one's getting services. It's just throwing some, a small handful of unhoused people in cheap motel rooms with no blankets or food and, you know, no services. Um, we have, um, so we have, let's see, so again, all your ethics scandals. Why is Paul still council president when he's... Has his own ethics scandal right now. Um, he's endorsing, using his position as council president to campaign for Adrian Nazarian. He should not be council president. Kevin, you need to go. You're fucking racist. You're already losing badly.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Um, item number 33 is on the Sunshine Canyon Trust Fund, um, and I just want to applaud Councilmember Lee anytime that he is sending money somewhere other than LAPD with this fund. Uh, that being said, this is going to the surveillance state with a bunch of security cameras, but marginal improvement. And on that note, I want to just applaud you and say something nice. Uh, Councilmember Lee is apparently one of the few people that can show up on time. He's always one of the first three people here. Y'all should be a lot more like him with that, except, you know, him being late reporting gifts. He's good on showing up to meetings on time, so I appreciate that. Uh, on the state of the city, uh, we had one person here, the council president, at 10:05, uh, and you got the people's presentations and proclamations, which is the single best inspiration for you to start your meeting on time. Um, I suggest for the state of this council, you guys start showing up on time or else Paul's gonna put you in his doghouse. With the state of the city, it has been over 365 days since Councilmember Yaroslavsky introduced her motion requesting a report back on the efficacy of 4118. Still not here. And why should we trust what the CLA is cooking up? We know Paul's leaning on them. When, when Councilmember Yaroslavsky intro'd that motion, you could see him trying, like, he really, really wanted to snap his pen in half.
Which item did you want?
I'm talking about the state of the city. And if we wanna talk about something else with the state of the city, you're facing sanctions for altering and fabricating evidence in court. How are we supposed to trust anything coming out of you? The state of the city is quite fucked when we got four council members arrested in four years and our council president can't appoint somebody to the Ethics Commission in his charter-mandated window. It's been over 264 days that he's been out of compliance with the charter. So for item 32, I wanna talk about, uh, the budget hearings and, and I'm glad that Paul left, just so I could speak one-on-one with the chair. Paul is suggesting that we have a protected budget of the Ethics Commission set at 6.5 million. Uh, that might sound decent considering the current Ethics Commission budget is 5.4 million, but that is mostly salaries. Those go up every year. So if we preserve those current staffing levels, they'll be at 5.8 million. And then we have these new labor agreements coming in. That's gonna tick them up to about 6.2 million. The other part of that charter proposal says that we gotta throw $250,000 more to the special prosecutor. That gets us to 6.45 million just for the upcoming year. That doesn't sound like an increase in the Ethics Commission budget. That sounds like a preservation of an inadequate status quo. Um, this whole idea of tying that figure to revenues is just gonna be garbage.
You'll have...
Wildly unpredictable. I, I don't mind it. It's gonna give them a great budget ultimately, but it's gonna be wildly unpredictable and it's bad policy. You should tie it to inflation. It has been 1,595 days without this council changing a single law to address corruption. But Council President Krikorian is finally moving. On Friday, they're gonna be hearing an item requiring people to file forms when they recuse themselves. Thank you, Curran Price, for the inspiration, getting that across the finish line. Uh, please, make this irrelevant. Vote that thing through. Let's get it up in front of this council. I, I just find it weird that it took so much effort to get the council president to move anything on ethics charter reform. And it's such incompetence from that office. You could've avoided multiple bad articles, bad stories, by just doing what you were... You're doing now. I don't know what's going on around there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I feel like speaking about the, uh, state of the city and the mayor's proposed budget, it's worth bringing up that, the 4118 report back, which speaks to the state of the city and speaks to the proposed budget. Um, like Rob said, passed this council 366 days ago and we're still waiting for the report back. And now with this interesting story that came out in the LA Times this morning about the city lying in federal court and manufacturing documents relating to sweeps and how sweeps are carried out and how they're throwing away people's stuff, it's interesting to wonder if this is why the report back itself has been held back by Paul Krikorian and company.
Speaker, it's not clear that you're speaking to the agenda item.
Excuse me?
Please speak to the agenda items.
I'm speaking to the proposed budget, which sanitation has a budget item, right? LAPD has a budget item. All of those report backs that are part of the 4118 report back actually are city departments with a budget, so it actually is relative, um, to the proposed budget. And people in this room, I've heard, love to speak about the success of things like Inside Safe, um, and what these flowery conversations overlook are the daily sweeps happening across the city using language of CARE and CARE Plus and Operation Healthy Streets. No one in city council brings up these constant violent sweeps, which we know, which we have long known sanitation lies about, but now they've done it in federal court. Elected officials are either part of the rot of corruption or you speak up and act against it. Which side are you on? And to that point, I'll go into my public comment and ask for some help from the audience. Which side are you on? 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 They say that politicians, they work for you and me, but in a city as corrupt as this, it's getting really hard to see. Everybody, which side are you on, Bob? Which side are you on? Which side are you on? Which side are you on? You say you're for the people, you're here and working hard, but your silence on corruption is getting pretty loud. Which side are you on? Which side are you on? Which side are you on, Yaroslavsky? Which side are you on? The city keeps on lying on the streets and in federal court while disappearing unhoused people from Lincoln Heights down to the port. So which side are you on?
So solo, solo.
Which side are you on?
No, no participation.
My clock's still on. Which side are you on?
Okay, thank you. All right, this is, again, no audience participation. Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Daniel Talton. I'm your neighbor in CD1 and I'm a member of LA Can's Human and Civil Rights Committee.
Speaker, you should continue with your public comment.
I'm waiting for the council to pay attention to the public.
You need to speak to the item, sir. Go ahead.
There's no reason to speak to people who are not listening.
Okay, then we can move you to general public comment.
All right, general public comment. Everybody in this room knows the city is lying about sweeps. This morning news that the city is altering documents in federal court is confirmation. We die while you lie and lie and lie and bullshit with each other on the phone. 4118 is an unconstitutional law buttressed by the LAPD's indiscriminate violent enforcement, by lies and altered documents in federal court, and by you, the city council. Where is the 4118 report back? A year late. We die while you lie and lie. Are you not embarrassed? Where is your dignity? Where is your self-respect? I might be impressed by the scope of just nonsense and the scope of... I don't even know why I talk to you. I don't know why anybody talks to you. Fuck you. Fuck you.
Thank you for that. Uh, next speaker. Gentleman with the Santa hat, welcome.
Speaker, which item, which name did you use to sign up and which items would you like to speak to?
Mike Greenspan, all items and general public comment. And yes, ho, ho, ho!
You'll have three minutes for the items.
I know it's Christmas in April. Um, Christmas in April, yes. First of all, District 8 on item 31, they're extending that contract. They've been good. Ho, ho, ho. Santa's got his nice list in, in Harris Dawson's district. Now, also, we have, okay, we got a couple of light fixture things. You know, those $400 throwaways, lighting up City Hall. And of course, 400 times a million gives us our deficit, $400 million. Hey, it's only money. I mean, it must grow on trees. Yes, those Jewish money trees, folks. They're all over, Districts 3 and 5. That fat pig Paul Corretts planted them thinking he'd get to be controller. Well, guess what, folks? There's no money trees. There's no money on the trees. So, but here are the gloves. Let's recess the meeting and go pick the money off the trees. Now, we're gonna have a special thing. Oh, and part of the lights are about the, the budget. Whoop-de-doo. After all, we are really wasting money. I'm not gonna go into the which side are you on, folks. I just know you guys throw money away. And as far as people listening, well, that's a dream world.
Stick to the items.
Now, we got a couple cannabis things, convenience. I think we got enough cannabis. We got enough pot shops in town. In fact, one of your deputy city attorneys, Andre Quintero, that fat fuck wetback, he's got connections to pot shops over in the San Gabriel Valley. I wonder if those tentacles are over here, too. Just my curiosity. We all seem to think it's okay. We have enough pot shops. We should probably start giving it away for free. That's how many we have. Now, street lighting. You mean our taxes don't cover it, folks? It's à la carte. We gotta pay for it extra. And obviously, we must not be paying our street lighting assessments in Council District 2 because over there on Sherman Way and Lancasham, that is dark. And why should we put lights out on anyway? I mean, after all, how will those people be able to do their drug deals in the dark and, and their various sex services, like some guy getting a prostitute to give him a blowjob or something? If, if you put lights out there, then they're gonna have to go elsewhere. Maybe they'll have to follow Reverend Jimmy Swagger to the whorehouse because it won't be good enough to have sex on the street anymore. And, and we, we seem to think that, okay, let's dispend money. We've got one thing for, was it, how many million? 52 million? How can I put it to where you'd understand it? If your Jewish piano's not playing happy tunes, you're whistling Dixie.
Which item are you pretending to be on, sir?
Now, we have, um, I see we've got our carbon footprint unions in the room, the purple shirthers. Yes, they stuffed my mailbox a couple years ago with one and two leaflets a day. All those dead trees. If we're gonna talk, especially with Earth Day coming up on the 22nd, maybe we shouldn't stuff people's mailboxes with a guy, for a guy named Bob Hertzberg, a slimy Jewish lawyer who would say anything to get a vote. I live in Supervisor District 3. We went against them. We voted for that billboard broad, Lindsey Horvath. We have a billboard broad here, Monica Rodriguez. A couple billboard broads lost. Evan lost against cunt ramen noodle. And we also had, what's his name? The other Mitch, Mitch the bitch, lost. But we still got that broad, Alini, who's running for governor. We got Mommy Moss over there in, um, industry, Jessica and Kanye with the Al...
Okay, that's your time.
Elmani Flores.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, really wonder why people are not in rapt attention. Next speaker.
Speaker, which name did you sign up under and which items would you like to speak on?
Well, I mean, you know, if you weren't a DEI hire, you'd know I'd speak on all fucking items and general fucking comment, right?
You'll have three minutes for the items.
You haven't fucking seen me before, huh? Kevin, you piece of fucking shit.
You still have to identify which item you're talking to, sir.
Kevin, you piece of shit. Oh, let's start again. My clock over again. All fucking items, Jew boy.
You still have to identify which item when you start talking about...
Well, Jew boy, I told you I'd speak on all items, right?
Doesn't, you have to tell us what you're talking about.
Well, why don't you figure...
Right now, it doesn't sound like you're talking about any items. You're just doing...
Uh, let's see. Let's see, Hebrew.
Attacking and attacking.
Let's see. Uh, is Dan... Is he on any of the items?
Sir, you wanna, which item?
He's on four.
Are you speaking to an item? You have to explain what you're speaking to. It's not clear when you're just attacking people whether you're talking about an item. At least try to pretend to relate it to an item, sir. Go ahead.
Turn the fucking microphone on. It's number fucking eight, number fucking nine, number fucking 10. These fucking cannabis fucking items, right? You son of a bitch, is that right?
It's up to you to what you wanna speak to, sir. Go.
Well, what the fuck is the difference? You're not gonna listen anyway, right? So, who gives a fuck? I talk about these items where this guy is sitting there littering his district, this one-term council member, with all these pot shops so they can have entry-level drugs in their bodies the rest of their fucking lives. Nobody needs this marijuana shit that they sell at these fucking places. It's an entry-level drug, Kevin. They're gonna wind up on fucking heroin. They're gonna wind up alcoholics. They're gonna wind up in the streets. You don't need drugs unless you're terminally ill, like my great aunt was at 90 years old. Then you need medically prescribed. This is not medical. This is just some tax bullshit on the part of this bullshit fucking cocksucker city fucking council that you wanna tax people into oblivion and make them drug addicts. So let's see, we're gonna have to, we have a disruption here.
Go ahead, sir. We're listening to rapt attention to you.
Oh, look at that. You don't wanna stop my time for a disruption.
Go ahead, sir.
You don't wanna, right?
We're listening. You have our, you have our...
Is that a warning?
Go ahead.
No warning, right?
You have our attention.
No fucking warning, right?
We're hanging on your every word. Go ahead.
How come, how come somebody else gets a warning? They, no warning. So let that be known, staffer B. John Lee, okay? Because you fucking pieces of shit do nothing but run this city into the ground and try to tax new sources of revenue.
Speaker, it's not clear which item you're speaking on.
I'm talking about your, you DEI, I'm talking about the four fucking goddamn cannabis in CD number 14 that shouldn't be there. Let's see, you dumb bitch. Four items minus three minutes equals, oh, I can speak on the fucking items within three minutes, right? Now let's get into this.
Okay, you can do your general public comment now, sir.
I was fucking assaulted. I was fucking assaulted on Friday and these officers of the law allowed it. Assaulted. I was here at this fucking podium to speak and not one of you fucking cocksuckers did anything to stop it. That's a crime. Interfering with a protected activity. Nothing. Even a disruption, nothing. But if we do something, little noises, you're disrupting. You're being thrown out of a meeting. This cocksucker, Macosker, this morning closed public comment at 8:30 this morning, reopened it and allowed somebody to speak two minutes after it was closed. And the sergeant cocksucker saw it. But you don't say nothing, right? So now, we're gonna play a new game. I didn't sign up, Bob, at this meeting today, yet you illegally violated my anonymity. Fuck you.
Okay, next speaker, please. Okay. Alrighty. Um, next speaker.
Uh, I want to speak on all items. Um, start with number six. Uh, there are several items that are talking about the same thing, basically about LAPD, uh, cannabis, marijuana business permit or something. Uh, that's my first concern of the day. Uh, right now, you know, when you're walking on the street, you smell marijuana everywhere because, uh, the city, the county, the state decides to legalize that. When you go to a high school, college, sometimes even middle school students, uh, somewhere around the campus, you smell marijuana and that is truly disgusting. Uh, right now, in the city council bathroom, uh, once in a while, you smell like marijuana, truly disgusting. Instead of controlling those kind of criminal, uh, behavior, and then right now, what I see, the city is trying to legalize every illegal activity. So right now, they were asking LAPD to approve this and then I'm really concerned for all of the young kids and other adults. And then now, let's move to item number 30. Number 30, it is about, uh, offering a word to identify of a death person. Well, I'm really surprised to, to see the name, the Soto Martinez, on this agenda because... Well, I'm really surprised to see the name Soto Martinez on this agenda because Soto Martinez, when we're talking about defund the police, that's number one, Soto Martinez. And then right now, somehow, he is so concerned about the crime. All of a sudden, he is so concerned of the murder, but at the same time, he is the number one talking about defund the police. Now, the truth is, if we continue to defund the police, you're gonna see this kind of award, reward to a murder on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis, because you do not have enough detective, you do not have enough officer, you do not have enough sergeant, lieutenant. Nobody is going to solve those murder because you defunded them at the first place. Now, let's move to item number 32 regarding a public budget. And then, I'm concerned about this budget hearing because like I mentioned earlier, there were significant cuts in the LAPD budget and in the public safety budget and then talking about so-called woke community service, which has never worked, so-called homeless services, which is homeless continue to go up. So I'm really concerned about the budget. When can we have a city council that can dedicate the budget to public safety? We paid our taxes, income taxes, property taxes, sales taxes to the city. In return, we want to be protected from all those violent criminals. But somehow, we continue to pay taxes. Our taxes continue to increase, but at the same time, the budget is not going to LAPD. We are continuing to be the victim of the crime. That does not make any sense. Talking about a general public comment, regarding the city council right now, right now, we are trying to legalize marijuana permit from the LAPD. In the future, when I go down Figueroa Street, maybe next year, Los Angeles City, we're gonna legalize prostitution on the Figueroa Street because no LAPD ever care about that. Maybe in the future, we're gonna legalize murder, legalize rape, legalize whatever criminal activities because there's nobody care about anymore. So instead of what I see, instead of catching criminals, instead of dealing with the crimes, right now, the city council is trying to legalize the crimes and then release the criminals from, with the help of the district attorney, with the help of the governor Newsom. So right now, the city is having a lawlessness. There's no law and order. And at the same time, we continue to pay taxes, we need safety in return. But you cannot continue to ask for taxes, but you do not, you continue to provide victims in the society.
Great, thank you.
I want to speak on, give me two minutes. I've got somewhere to go. My name, my name is Rick. I want to say something. This man Kevin De Leon was at 420, had some people attack me. I've got two or three more that I'm trying to arrest. And the building that he went to, they have.
Speaker, are you speaking to an agenda item?
I'm talking about the agenda, 4118. Some people wanted, they assaulted me. I got arrest warrants coming out for all of them. The building that he was at.
I think we'll move you on to your general public comment.
I'm telling you, 4118, man. Somebody touched my merchandise I had on the side, on the side, and also, I'm trying to prosecute. What I'm saying, 4118 is no good. But besides that, Kevin De Leon was in a building where they have young age prostitutes coming in the building. And he gonna believe them, they got a lot of corruption inside the same building that way he was sitting at? And talking about they had a secret meeting on Rick? He mentioned my name in the video, all right? He shouldn't have mentioned my name. I'm not that important. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Speaker, please remind us of the name you signed up under and which items you'd like to speak to.
Mumia Abu Jamal, and I signed up for items 28 through 33 and public comment.
Okay, three minutes for the items and one for general public comment.
Wonderful, all right. So, "The devil came here yesterday and it smells of sulfur still today. There should be no special recognition of Karen Bass's propaganda speech. Her declamation was riddled with lies. Let's roll through some of the hogwash. Karen stated, 'We will not hide people, instead we will house people.' But from the start, Karen has described her, yes Papa, Inside Safe, her crown jewel, as a project aimed at eliminating the most visible encampments that have long frustrated neighbors. Yes, Papa. To call Inside Safe a proactive rejection of a status quo is deplorable. Inside Safe is a failure. There have been more program exits than there have been people permanently housed over a 15-month period. Many mutual aid groups have detailed the lack of accountability and transparency. Many unhoused people who have joined Inside Safe have detailed the lack of services and broken promises." What you got to say? Yes. So Karen went as far as stating that we are quote-unquote disrupting, challenging and rebuilding the system, but nothing could be further from the truth. Karen is bolstering this.
Speaker, you should move on to your next agenda.
Ma'am, this is part of the, I'm getting to the part of her speech that is referring to the budget.
Which item number are you speaking on?
Which is the item, I don't have the items in front of me, but it was item 32. Item 32, I believe, which is part of the budget, correct?
You need to move on to your next agenda item.
So ma'am, I was speaking on that. She said, "It's no secret, if you allow me the opportunity to do so."
What she said is that you get one minute per item?
Exactly, which I was moving on to my budget item, which was the next thing I was going to say, but you didn't allow me the opportunity and yet you're still running my fucking time. So speaking of money, Karen said, "There's no secret we are entering a tough budget year. All that caused by her and you all. Her decisions supported by this council have led us into a major deficit and which department leads us in overspending? The LAPD, who sits at 105 million. The second biggest part of our overspending has been liability claims, 91 million. And who wants to guess which city department has cost us the most in that category, the LAPD? Now Karen claimed that many of the city's vacant positions exist because of flawed budgeting and that she would eliminate these ghost positions, so why isn't that happening with LAPD? In fact, in this budget request approved by this council, you earmarked 1.2.
Speaker, you need to move on to your next item.
So I didn't have a full minute to speak on this item.
You had a full minute.
I did not have the full, I started at 1:30. I officially started speaking on this item because we had this back and forth.
We can move you to your general public comment.
This is fucking bullshit. Again, all you, all this talk about how we can't defund the police, but it's become crystal clear that you can defund youth development, you can defund recreation and parks, you can defund animal services, you can defund childcare centers, and none of you so-called leaders will bat an eye. Karen even had the nerve to mention the cost of each overdose, each emergency room visit and each night in county jail, but still fails to grapple with the cost of pushing forward historic funding of the most murderous police department in the nation, one that preys on our unhoused neighbors. And lastly, Karen stated, "Our work is to leave the old way in the dust." No, it's not. It's about leaving so many of us in the dust and getting carte blanche to do it because you have a black face. Now Katie, it's time for the report back. After all this shit that just came out, right? The fact that the city will face sanctions for altering, modifying, falsifying the city's justifications, for illegally destroying unhoused people's property. You stated that 4118 was elaborate shell game and again, you have not requested for this. Where's the report back? It's very simple. It's a very simple thing. Where is it? Monica.
Great, great. Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Sir. Okay, next speaker. Next speaker, sir. Please no shouting up.
Okay. Aquí estoy este día para apoyar a unas compañeras que están en huelga por este día en una tienda. Gracias a mi servicio de la comunidad de aquí de Los Ángeles, yo si he sabido de mis derechos y sé cómo defenderme. Pero la mayoría de trabajadores, casi el 80%.
I am here today to support some of my coworkers that are on strike at a store and I'm grateful to that I serve the community of Los Angeles. So I know about my rights and I know how to defend myself, but the 80%, si continúe por favor?
No saben de sus derechos, ni siquiera saben que tienen día de descanso por enfermedad.
So, but 80% of the people, they don't know about their rights and they don't even know that they have days off when they get sick.
Que son pagados. Por esa razón somos vulnerables a demasiadas injusticias.
They don't know about the sick days that should be paid and that's why we are vulnerable to so many unfair situations.
Como violencias.
Like violence.
Robos.
And robbery, they steal our salary.
Discriminación.
They discriminate us.
Nuestras compañeras quieren que nos quedemos callados.
Our companies wants us to stay silent.
Pero es hora que tengamos un aire de protección a todos los trabajadores aquí en Los Ángeles.
That is time for us to have protection to all the workers here in Los Angeles.
Necesitamos entrenamientos.
We need training.
Gracias.
Se le acabó su tiempo, señora. Muchas gracias.
It's your time, but, okay. Gracias, that's your tempo. Ms. Padilla, I'm sorry. For what purpose do you rise? I can't hear you.
That's what I'm saying. It's loud in here. Can we please make a message to everyone?
Thank you.
Please tone it down. Very loud in here.
If we could have quiet in this chamber so everybody can hear. We could take any conversations that are happening outside of the chambers, please. Thank you, Ms. Padilla, pointing that out.
Speaker, which name did you sign up under and which items would you like to speak on?
Okay, good morning, everybody. My name, no wonder they don't listen to us. Good morning, everybody. My name is Alejandra Perez. I work in the LA Taco Bell, the LA Taco Bell to support my daughter and myself as well. I'm out here trying to reach out to all of you guys to support the fast food workers that work all over the world. Support us on being, getting more safety methods for everybody and more safety training to know how to handle situations, know how to handle certain situations that put our life in danger every single day. We really do not know if we're gonna come home or not. There was an incident once in my store that I had this customer chase me around the store and he literally hopped out, he literally hopped over the counter and chased me all around because of the fact that I told him that he had to leave because he was commenting and making inappropriate comments to one of my coworkers that did not know how to speak English at all. So I asked, I asked the workers to refuse the help and I told them, I told them, "You gotta go because you shouldn't be speaking to my coworkers like that."
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you for your comments.
Buenas dias, mi nombre es Lourdes Flores. Trabajo para Taco Bell aquí en Los Ángeles. Estoy aquí porque estamos pasando por una crisis de violencia en mi tienda. I am here because we are going through a crisis of violence in the store where I work. So una ocasión yo salí del walk-in y oí gritos y escuché y miré a mi compañera que la atendía en la corralada. In one occasion, I've heard like someone screaming and I got out and I saw that they were like having trapped my coworker. Con algo pero no alcancé a ver, so yo me fricie, no supe qué hacer, me sentí en peligro. So I saw this and I wasn't sure, but there was, they have something that were like, like pointed to her, so I freeze and I felt that I was in real danger. So pensé que ya no iba a regresar a mi casa viva, so. I thought I wouldn't come back home alive. Quisiera que pasaran una ley que proteja a los trabajadores. So I would like a law to be passed so the workers are protected. Para que nos protejan y también no sabían mis derechos hasta que conocí la Unión. Also, I didn't know anything about my rights until I find out about the Union. También quisiera que pasaran otra ley para que nos protejan por los abusos laborales. Also, I would like to be protected, like maybe to pass a law about the abuses, like worker abuses. Y también quisiera llegar bien a mi casa de regreso. And I also would like to make sure that I go back home and I'm safe with my children. Buenos dias. Estoy aquí para pedirles que por favor nos ayuden y apoyen a los trabajadores de la comida rápida a pasar una ley para.
I am here to ask for you guys to pass a law to help the fast food workers.
Para pedir una ley de entrenamiento para todos los trabajadores de la comida rápida ya que yo en lo personal he pasado por muchas violencias en el trabajo, acoso sexual, robo de salario y estoy aquí juntamente con mis compañeros para pedirle que nos apoyen.
I am here to ask for a law to be passed for training in the workplace because me and my coworkers have had to endure a lot of abuse and violence here in the workplace. See you, señora.
Sin embargo, más del 80% de los trabajadores no conocen sus derechos, por eso les pido que nos apoyen y se unan a nosotros los trabajadores para aprobar una ley de entrenamiento donde podamos estar seguros.
Because more than 80% of the workers here do not understand their rights, so I am asking for you guys to please approve, to please pass a law that would educate the rest of our workforce here so that we may know our rights.
Yo no conocía mis derechos hasta que me uní al sindicato.
I did not know my rights until I joined this union.
Así fue como pude sonar la alarma y seguiré sonando la alarma cada vez que haya algo mal en mi trabajo. Gracias.
That is how I was able to sound the alarm every time that I saw something abnormal in my workplace.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning. General public comment. Even subhuman lowlife Nori Martinez said, "If you are indicted, you will be suspended from this council." Petty pinkface corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Klu Klukkorian is even lower than Martinez because he has indicted out on bail embezzling criminal current price voting daily on this corrupt sleazy council. This is the black representation we have with 20% of the sleazy council. Black women are only 4.3% of the population, but 22% of female rape, 36% of female assault, 33% of female homicide, and 33% of all female violence. Nearly 50% of the homeless, 50% of the incarcerated, and 50% of the unemployed. The black community has zero representation from these incompetent corrupt sellout, self-serving indicted, black Uncle Tom members of the corrupt city council. I demand all their resignations and also city council only 6.
Time. Thank you. Next speaker.
I don't know if Inila Padilla has a frequent user program going on with this cannabis thing because every time I turn around, she's voting positive for this cannabis use in her areas. How is that helping the neighborhood? It is a bridge product there into deeper drugs. Everyone said it from the beginning. You got the Walking Dead out on your streets now and you're saying it didn't start with cannabis. Mr. Spender's 100% right on that. They should not be going into our neighborhoods. But it seems like these people put a lot of money to get her elected, so now she's gotta go ahead and return the favor and get these people going. Kevin De Leon, no different. Come on, stop with that. Rick was in there talking to you that you were on Skid Row and you pumped your fist last week on camera and then today you stand up and enforce them. This cannabis stuff must be signs of this stuff because you guys really can't be acting normal. Something's gotta be going on with this cannabis. You need to stop that in the neighborhoods. Going to the budget committee, we, the mayor's proposal on 32, I believe it is, is nothing short of embarrassing to sit there and hear Bloomingfield talk about getting rid of public workers. Every politician who's never served as a worker thinks that the best way to save the city some money is to get rid of the public workers. That way they don't have the overhead of retirement. But you don't respond like a private company. We respond with a lot of pride in the middle of the night during a crisis. So don't listen to a politician that thinks getting rid of public workers is your answer. We serve and we're proud to serve. There's a lot that comes with that. We put our lives in the line's way so the public is okay the next day after a storm, during a storm. Politicians like that. Rami, you want to get rid of the gas blowers? Let's go to public comment. The gas blowers, that's 1998. Gas had nothing to do with it. It was about the decibels that created the sound. The only, the reason that this is even on your board is because some consumer in your area is trying to get you elected, put that on in front of you and said, "Hey, I can't sleep at night. These gardeners are showing up at 7:00 in the morning." While the ordinance says from 10:00 to 7:00, no noise. So just because they're reaching out to you? Leave these people alone. Inila Padilla's father was a gardener. Don't mess up. We come from a modest means we work hard. Let us work and don't get in line. I mean, you're starting to sound like the rodeo band. Let the people work. Let the people work and get the soft rails and, uh, out of Pacoima and out of Arlita, Monica, uh, Monica Rodriguez and Enelup Padilla, you guys sold out your communities because you don't live in that area. There is no parking lots for the people in those areas.
Yes, which items would you like to speak on?
Can you tell me what items are available please and all of, and, uh, public comment?
Items one through four, seven, eight, thirteen, nineteen through thirty-three and thirty-four and thirty-five.
Alright, thank you, I'll take all available items and general public comment.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Alright, cool, so, uh, speaking of like, I, I think it's really crazy how we're just gonna light up city hall to recognize the mayor's State of the Union, uh, State of the City address. It's pretty pathetic considering that for a lot of us, four hundred dollars would fucking break our bank, you know, make us fucking wanna kill ourselves because four hundred dollars is a lot of fucking money. And this is four hundred dollars basically because Karen Bass is in a good mood and she's like, which is just, which is just burn money, which is just pop champagne, because I guess we got it like that. Um, item number, uh, twenty-eight is four hundred dollars for autism awareness month. Um, I've heard from people that have autism that bright lights, uh, suddenly in places that they're familiar with, but they're not expecting is actually a cause for a bad day. So keep that in mind, maybe we don't need to spend four hundred dollars to do that. Um, item number, item number thirty-two is a proposed hearing for the mayor's budget. Uh, the mayor's budget is bullshit. The city council's budget is bullshit. They always, I, I pay attention to those meetings, they're long as fuck and they go on for a very long time and I spent so much of my life that I can't get back paying attention to those stupid budget meetings and you know what they end up doing anyway? They say fuck the budget, let's give L A P D twice, twice their allocated budget. Let's, oh, let's give them more overtime. Oh, let's take money from the street furniture fund and, and give it to a police cadet program. Oh, let's take money from general services and put it towards, uh, security cameras. Take, take that shit out of the fucking police fund. You doubled it, it's, it's billions of dollars, that's more than some country spent on their military. That's out, that's fucking crazy. Um, so that's nonsense. Uh, mayor's budget is not to be respected. Um, it's supposed, honestly, it isn't, she doesn't respect it herself. Uh, weed licenses, um, I like weed, I think a lot of people, uh, make the problem overblown. However, there's way too many weed shops. I, as somebody who, who fucking smokes weed, I can tell you that there's weed shops everywhere and the price doesn't go down. So for all these people that claim we, we have a capitalist, you know, going on free market, blah, 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 you know, why do you have all these, uh, shops everywhere and their price don't go down? There's competition everywhere. So we don't need that shit. And then how do you determine, uh, convenience or necessity? Can, can we get a hearing, uh, some kind of public hearing where we can see how you do that? Because there's people that are fucked up everywhere. I, and there's no shortage of where to get a drink or where to get a smoke. I don't think we, I don't think it's a, a convenience issue because no one's like, "Oh, fuck, there's nowhere around here to get the weed." That's crazy, come on y'all. Uh, still have some time on these items, so I'm gonna give you all some more hard time. Um, the, the security cameras for the rec center, I think is, uh, fucking nonsense. Um, not the security cameras per se, although I hate to ramble today.
Speaker, you have one minute for general public comment.
Alright, alright, cool, thank you very much. Um, Enelup, yo, you're weak as fuck, girl. Uh, so you said, "Oh, it's so noisy in here, I can't hear anything." Bitch, how, how noisy is it on your side of the horseshoe? People come there the entire time complaining that they're not paying, they're being ignored and you don't say nothing about, "Can I get my colleagues to, uh, take their conversation to the back?" You don't say nothing like that because you're weak, you're fucking weak. You don't represent the, you don't represent the, nobody, the community, you represent yourself and your own interest and your, whatever career you think you have ahead of you. Uh, learn the pledge of allegiance, your first day you fucked it up, um, and you can hardly read. Uh, Bloomingfield, I thought it was disgusting how you just treated everybody with their comments. Uh, it's really gross, you know, we have every right to say what we say because this isn't a chicken and the egg scenario. People are acting the way they are acting because of the way y'all are acting. It's not, "Oh, when did this start?" No, you show complete disdain and disregard for us, so we have every duty and right to disrespect you.
Private caller, please press star six to unmute. Alright, uh, members, are there any announcements? Councilmember Park, you have an announcement?
Council president, thank you, we will be starting trade, travel and tourism.
One, one moment council member, uh, to the people here in the audience, please, council member's trying to speak, please take your conversations outside.
Thank you, we'll be starting trade, travel and tourism committee at two thirty, thank you.
Okay.